All right, welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March the 18th, 2025. Mr. Spandario, can we have a report from closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council convening in closed session to discuss one item of anticipated litigation. The council received information and provided direction of staff, but there's no reportable action.
All right, thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please stand to join us in a silent prayer followed by a flag salute. Salute, pledge. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded and closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and direct U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, March 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 22nd at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable, Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from council?
Yes, is there any, and I forgot to look at the numbers, is there any way we can move my Parks and Rec appointment further in the agenda so that she doesn't have to hang around?
So councilmember Rodriguez is asking if we can move item L1 up from the, in the agenda to just after the consent, you want to move it to first item after consent? Would that be okay?
It's okay.
Would that be okay with everybody? Okay, so we're going to move item L1.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is there any presentations this evening?
None.
All right, moving on to public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First, we have Ken Lee.
I'd still like to bring up Fifth Street between C and D Street. They are still parking the cars any way they wish at 333 Fifth Street. They're diagonal parking in the parallel parking slot, they're backing in, doing whatever they want. The other side of the street, they don't do that anymore after they got ticketed. The solution is to restripe diagonal parking, just like they have in front of the Grange, up to Compadre's, leaving a truck on load section at the corner. The other thing I'd like to bring up, the sidewalks between Fourth and Fifth Street on C Street are uneven, and it's causing the handicap walkers to catch the wheels and fall and slip. We've had to pick people up on the food days because they tripped over the uneven things and we have to pick them off the ground. I asked any council member to walk it with a walker and see how far you can get without catching on one of those. The other problem is, it's getting dangerous traffic conditions at the east side of the flea market. Vehicles are driving in from the library side, going against the traffic flow of the one-way out. They're playing chicken. Last week, a car took me on playing chicken, and when I stopped and told him, hey, this is a one-way flow, he said, I know it is, next time, get out of my way. So basically, you know, if I had a bigger truck, I would have rammed him. So, you know, because I had the right of way. And they're purposely and intentionally doing it. It happens during the day, they're going in the opposite way, and between 2:00 and 4:00, when they have the baseball field being used. So basically, the solution is to use an A-frame, but to do not enter signs, because you had a lot of them on C Street that you used. You can put those up during the flea market days, and you can paint that asphalt, do not enter. They did use police to basically cite these people, but there's not just one or two, it's many people doing it. Also, can the C Street corridor between Sixth and Fourth Street have the parking spaces re-stripe so it matches the new section of C Street? That way, people know it's from C to Fourth Street, it's all one nice corridor. I'm not asking to tear up the sidewalks, just use the same paint they had and restripe it. That way, it could, it looks conformity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Armando, is there, is there a do not enter on the library end, on that end? I can't remember. Does it say that, one-way only or anything there?
I'd have to go back and look. I really don't know if it says do not enter. It has two stop signs, or two.
Yeah, I know.
Stop signs.
Could we maybe just look, check at that and see if there's maybe, if there is signage and maybe we can, the council can talk about that or something, I don't know.
I will put a GoGov into Public Works.
And Mr. Griffin, I think Mr. Lee was referring to the sidewalks in front of Spawns Cookies. I don't know if maybe, they've been ground in some spots, I think, before because of the tree stuff, but I don't know if maybe someone can look at that again or something. Any?
Yeah, I'll have the Public Works Maintenance Team look at those areas.
All right, thank you. Any more public comment?
Good evening, City Council. Next month, you're going to be dealing with the topic of the code enforcement, so I figured when that meeting goes, it's going to be a pretty busy meeting, so I figured I'd jump to the front of the line and express mine, so I don't have to express it next month when you're there. To me, it's a comment of proactive code enforcement versus reactive code enforcement. For the 20-plus years I've lived in Galt, we always had a reactive code enforcement, meaning that your neighbor needed to call on you, someone needed to call on you, and usually then we would see a code enforcement come out and have a conversation, give you a warning, and you needed to deal with it. To me, that was kind of a nice small-town feel to it, and I thought that was a decent way to deal with it. Now I'm seeing more and reading more on code enforcement, and I'm seeing other municipalities starting to use it as a revenue enhancement. I don't know if municipalities attend meetings, but I know managers and owners attend meetings where we get these great ideas planted in our conference that, hey, this may be it, but I want to make sure that we shut that down if that is on the agenda. But there are other municipalities surrounding us that are looking at raising funds through code enforcement. The other side that I would like to suggest, I am all for keeping the code enforcement the same way, with probably one exception, one I'd like to go to reactive again versus I want a neighbor to call. I want a restriction that the neighbor live within a half a mile of the code enforcement issue. And my belief there is that the natural thing is when you get one of those notices, you start looking at all your neighbors. I've been guilty of it myself. And you go, why didn't that guy get warned? And I think what also can happen is one person that is out of spite now can start driving around the entire city of Galt and saying, okay, why didn't this guy get cited? Why didn't this guy get cited? Why didn't this guy get cited? So I think it needs to be addressed in our municipal code to possibly shut down unfair treatment of different citizens that are out there, making sure that it's uniformly approached. And that's all I had for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman.
No more public comment.
No more public comment? Okay. All right, moving on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with Mr. Pratton.
Okay, yes, I attended the, my first LAFCO meeting, so. LAFCO stands for Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission. Pretty interesting, not too much excitement on the agenda for the first meeting that I was at, and not really much to report on. In the upcoming meeting, they've got a pretty big project that they're going to be involved in for just south of the airport in Sacramento, so anybody wants any information on that stuff, I'm getting up to speed pretty quick. So, pretty much all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pratton. Vice Mayor Sandu?
No report tonight because I was on vacation.
All right, good to have you back. Mr. Reed?
So I attended, I attended my first Consumers Groundwater Authority meeting with Mr. Griffin, met a lot of great individuals. What we did out of the meeting, the first meeting was, we had to re-up our agreement with them, and so that was signed and turned back in. At the next meeting, we were asked to give them presentation on the city of Galt water usage. So I'll be working with Mr. Griffin to make sure that happens, and that's it.
Can you explain that a little more? What that is?
So the other members of the Consumers Groundwater Authority, all of the ag districts, think that Galt is the large straw in the basin, so we're going to be presenting information that shows them historically what our water consumption is. Out of the annual report, one of the things that came out was our water, the amount of water we pumped over the last several years has decreased, and that was a surprise to several members of the public, and the explanation was, unlike agricultural districts, farmers who do not have to have meters on their wells, the city is required to meter every customer, and, you know, and it's a commodity charge, so our citizens are very aware of how much water they use, and that's a lot of the reasons why, you know, our water consumption has gone down. So that's part of the message that will be conveyed to the GSA is just how small our amount of groundwater we pump out of the basin is compared to the, the overall group.
Interesting, thank you. I noticed you didn't have any black eyes or anything coming out from that meeting, so. All right, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, I attended the SAICOG Innovation, or Policy and Innovation Committee meeting. In that, we did some, you know, basic things, we looked over the budget, it's this policy, or this group's job to look over the budget and then pass it along to the board at large, so we went over that. One of the interesting things on the budget that I'll point out is that the, and hopefully everybody's heard this because I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, so don't shoot the messenger, but the causeway is going to be a toll road, and that's going to start in about 2028 is what they're shooting for. But in order to get there, there is an organization that has to run it, and so their name is CARTA, it stands for something, but don't ask me what that is. But they don't have any money, and they don't have any way to get money until people start paying the toll. So SAICOG issued them a loan a year ago, $1.3 million, and they have come back asking for another matching loan for 1.33 million. So our committee went ahead and approved that, and will push it to the board at large for SAICOG to go ahead and approve, but there was a lot of concern over that. What is the terms of this loan? What happens if this all goes defunct or, you know, whatever? So there is, there were many of us that were very concerned about continuing to loan money out to an entity that doesn't have anything. So, so right now, we'll be, or once this loan goes through, 2.6 million, we, SAICOG is also providing admin help with, for CARTA as well, so in a sense, we're kind of paying ourselves back because it's our admin getting paid for it, so we're getting a little bit back from it. But other than that, that was kind of the, the interesting part, we're still, you know, in the learning phase as new, those of us that are new on this board, so we're still getting lectures from attorneys about Brown Act and things like that, so that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I personally did not have any meetings on commissions or committees since the last, so I don't have anything to report on that. So we will be moving on to the consent calendar. Item J, it is recommended that items 1 through 6 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Is there any items on the consent that would like to be pulled by a council member? No? Okay. I would like to make a statement before I read these items. On item J6, I will be recusing myself from participating on that particular item as my residential property is near the subject annexation area. Based on this, I have potential conflict of interest, and will recuse myself from that consent item. Because the item is on consent, I'm not required to leave the room, but my vote will be as to the balance of the consent agenda only, items 1 through 5 and not item J6. So these items will be, item 1, receiving file warrants for the period ending of March 6th, 2025. Item 2 is going to be the minutes of the regular meeting from March 4th, 2025. Item 3 will be the treasurer's report for period ending January 2025. Item 4 will be the Galt Municipal Code Amendment in accordance with Housing Element Program H-E-K Implementation, SEQA exempt, Section 15061B3. Item 5 will be the Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance Amendment, second reading, and item 6 will be the ordinance of the City Council of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as Annexation Number 9 Fairway Oaks into the City of Galt, Community Facility District Number 2020-1, Public Services. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move. Sec.
Okay, just a second, guys. So I need to ask for a motion just for 1 through 5, right, Frank?
No.
Don't they, okay, right, okay.
You can ask for a motion for 1 through 6, and then when you vote, it just will be recorded as.
Okay.
For you, 1 through 5.
Okay, got it, all right. So moved by Councilman Reed, moved by, moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Reed. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. So you will record the vote, Tina, that item 6 reflected my refusal? All right, thank you. All right, moving on. We are now going to do item L1, which is from the city council's office. Subject is going to be Parks and Recreation Commission vacancy appointment. Ms. Hubert?
So the recommendation is Councilmember Rodriguez, appoint a community member to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill a vacant position in remaining term ending December 2026. Due to the reorganization of city council in November 2024, there is a vacancy on the Parks and Rec Commission. The prior commission members did not reapply. City staff advertise the vacancy on the city's website and social media sites. Two applications were received from Jeff Hood and Brooke Stamer, and both applicants meet the required qualifications. And we do have a member in the audience if you would like to speak.
Do you want to speak, Brooke?
Not before I speak, but I.
You got to come up front.
Can't come to a council meeting without speaking, that's the fun part.
Okay, so, yeah, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity. I know I am looking forward to giving back. I've been involved in a lot of different organizations throughout, you know, the soccer leagues, some different organizations throughout town, and with my work, I'm just about to get my master's in organizational management, so I am hopeful that my boots on the ground in the community, along with my professional background, can be an asset to working with the Parks and Recreational Department to help our kids retain athletes in this town. I know there's a lot of opportunity for artistic developments as well, so, yes, I'm just excited to hopefully be a part of helping our town. I grew up here, I graduated from Galt High, and I'm back, never left, so.
Thank you for applying, Brooke, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
So with that, I would like to appoint Brooke, is it Stammer or Stamer?
I say Stamer, but it practically is, I'm married into it, so yeah, I'm married.
Okay, so Brooke Stamer to Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
All right. So with that, we will be moving on to the next item, which is item K, Scheduled Matters, Notice of Public Hearing. First subject is going to be a required public hearing and reporting on the city of Galt vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. Ms. Kobe?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be discussing Assembly Bill 2561, which is addressing vacancies for public sector employers. So effective January 1, 2025, public employers are required to disclose the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. Long-term or position-specific vacancies in local government can be a problem affecting occupations across wage levels and educational requirements. High vacancies impact public service delivery and can impact other workers. AB 2561 is designed to foster transparency about the number and types of vacancies the city is experiencing among labor unions and how the city conducts recruitment and staff efforts to address them. So for our Galt Public Service Unit, they have 59 authorized positions and 10 vacancies. So that's a vacancy rate of 16.94%. Among some of the vacancies are the electrical technician, wastewater system operator, public works maintenance worker. We have two, there's four of them, four vacancies of that classification, two are in streets and two are in utilities, senior plant maintenance mechanic, and public works supply technician. Among the Galt Police Officers Association, there are 39 authorized positions. We have, at the moment, four vacancies, they're all in the police officer classification. So it's 11.42% vacancy rate amongst the entire GPOA. Our Police Department Civilians Association, there's 15 authorized positions, and when this data was pulled, we didn't have any vacancies, but since this has been published, there was one resignation, which makes a 6.6% vacancy rate for the GPDC. So Human Resources has focused on accessing a greater reach for targeted job advertisements, including the billboard on Highway 99, which was completely free to us, social media and specific job boards such as the American Public Works Association, California Cities, and Cal Pelra. Last summer, we participated in the Saturday Market to engage in the community and discuss job openings, in addition to attending job fairs at Littleton. A compensation study was done recently in preparation for contract negotiations, and we're currently meeting with the unions to discuss terms and conditions of employment. We've partnered with Delta College on their Excel program, which stands for Experience, Career Exploration, and Learning, and place an intern in Human Resources. We're also looking to place interns in Finance, PD, and Parks and Recreation. With the support of the city manager, departments have placed an emphasis on training and development because retention really comes down to the basics of taking care of our biggest assets, which are our people, treating them well, and paying them a competitive wage while offering training and development opportunities. This year, volunteers from each department have come together to establish the Galt Employee Engagement Committee. Their efforts recognize the hard work of individuals, excuse me, dedicated individuals at the city, and last month, we received 18 nominations for the You Make a Difference program, which really speaks volumes to our culture here at the city. One nominee is chosen at random per month, and they have the opportunity to earn a $25 gift card to a local vendor in town, or have lunch with the city manager, and so one person has taken Chris up on that offer. So, are there any questions?
Lunch with the city manager, wow. They're really putting the carrot out there, aren't they? Do you have any questions for Ms. Kobe? All right, thank you for the presentation. Moving on to item K2, public hearing on draft boundary maps of council districts and the first reading of an ordinance providing for the election of city council member, I'm sorry, the election of council members by five districts and establishing the boundaries and election order of each district. Mr. Spandario?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To recap, we've had four public hearings, we're required to have a minimum of five in terms of this districting process. Ideally, this is the fifth public hearing in the time to select a preferred map and to introduce and waive an ordinance to, based upon that map, and to set the sequencing, sequencing of the election cycle for 2026 to 2028, based on whatever preferred map is selected tonight, and we can walk you through that process. If the, if the council, just, just so we understand the process in terms of timelines, we, we really need to try to adopt an ordinance by April 1st, which is the original deadline under the CVRA lawsuit that we're under. So if the council wants to tweak any maps tonight, based, other than what's been provided, it can do so, we're just going to have to call a special meeting next week to try to introduce that preferred map, so then we can still have time to adopt it on April 1st. So I just want to make sure you know that you do have the opportunity to tweak or modify if you are so inclined, but under the Fair Maps Act, we have to give seven days' notice before that, any decisions are made, so we would have to call a special meeting next week to introduce the ordinance, and then, and then we would adopt it ideally by April 1st. So with that, I'll turn over to Demographer Liz Stitt, and she can take it from there.
Great, good evening. So I'm just going to pull up the presentation real fast, so this is meeting number five. We're going to go over some of the draft maps. Last meeting, scheduled, we're going to go over traditional districting principles real fast that we've used throughout this process, go over the public testimony, the recent map that was submitted by a member of the public. We'll get into the Draft A series, and then the public hearing schedule, and potentially a vote on the map and its sequencing. So first and foremost, these, and is this being shared? Can you see it? So this map, it's not on, sorry, I feel like I'm losing my mind. Can you guys see it on your screen, my presentation? No, okay. I think, Tina, you might have to stop sharing.
Want me to stop it?
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. Okay. So this was the criteria we used throughout the process. It's from the Fair Maps Act, state law. Ranked list of criteria, each district has to be under 10%, well, the whole map has to be under 10% total deviation. Districts have to be contiguous. They have to maintain communities of interest. Lines have to be easy to identify and understandable, and they need to be compact. So we're avoiding those funny-looking shapes. We also need to sequence. So we went over this a little bit last time. Since your elections are naturally staggered, this map is going to go into effect staggered. So the first election, when your districted map goes into effect, is in 2026. There are three seats up, and then in 2028, there are two seats up. Once 2028 happens, the map is fully adopted. So there will be two years where you're in a hybrid system of two at-large members and three districted members. Now, the sequencing can, you can consider incumbency, which is why we haven't really discussed districting and the sequencing, because we don't want to know where you live. So once you select a map, then we'll be able to talk about sequencing, and you'll be able to consider your residences. In addition to other factors as well, obviously, the public's encouraged to give their input on which districts they think should go in 2026, 2028. Other things to consider is, and what we've seen from other clients, is areas of cities that haven't had representation in a while. That comes up as a way to sequence as well. This is a map that was submitted by a member of the public. We call it Public Map 5, submitted by a Spear. Overall, good lines on it. It does have an issue that I want to flag. The total deviation is over 10%. So if we were to use a map like this, we would have to make adjustments if you wanted to select something like this. Maps that are being considered tonight, it's the A Series. However, any map that has been posted on the website for more than seven days, you're more than welcome to call up, and we can consider that map. We have two new maps specifically, A3 and A4. So A3 has no change to the northern part of the city. It does incorporate Galt High into District 1. It keeps the, or it underpopulates the high-growth areas. I did try my best to have District 1 follow the highway. It was not possible to do that while maintaining a majority-minority district, which is why you don't see that reflected in the maps. And then Draft A4 is a different way of viewing the north. So it does maintain District 1, Galt High in District 1, and it still underpopulates those high-growth areas. So this is Draft A. You've seen this since meeting number three, so I'll go past this. 8.8% total deviation. It's under that 10% total deviation that we're allowed to have. Again, you've seen A2 before. Total deviation is 9.6. And then A3 is one of the new ones. So this does ensure that it has Galt High in District 1.
Is there any way to make that bigger on your screen, or is that not possible? Just to make it a little easier to see?
I don't know if it's possible, but we can pull up the URL.
I mean, we have, we have maps up here, just for the public and the audience or something. It may be hard to see, but it's okay if you can.
And if anyone's watching from home, you can pull up the presentation. That might be easier to view, and all the maps are also on the website as well. Total deviation is 6.5%, while maintaining that majority-minority district in District 1. And then Draft 4, you can see that this is a different makeup of the north. So instead of 4 going up into Area 5, it now goes to the west of the freeway and picks up population there. Total deviation is 8.6%. And then this is just the A Series back-to-back, so you can see the differences in the maps. That's A2, A3, and A4. Tonight is the last scheduled hearing. If you make any changes to a map tonight, we'll just have to post that new map on the website, and then you would have to schedule a hearing at least seven days out. But I believe you still have some wiggle room, so that's possible. What's next? Essentially identifying a plan, selecting the sequencing and voting on it if there is a map that you would want to vote on tonight. And that is the presentation. I do have the ability to draw if needed, but I will turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you again for the refresher. Just to state a couple, I'm sure we've all looked at these maps. I would like to state again, what I mentioned last time is, my problem with basically all the A Series maps is that we have a real kind of weird hook kind of thing that takes us from, and I believe it's District 4 on most of them. It takes us kind of, yeah, so it kind of takes, we have, you're on the west side, and then you jump 99, and then there's part of the east side, and then it comes all the way down. And almost the one consistent thing we all have is when they come down to 4, it jumps the highway again and picks up that lower south area, which is a really weird, it kind of pulls out this, this area of houses right there, which are really kind of cohesive with the, with all the houses around it, but it pulls us out. And it just, mainly what I've determined is because it's just the way the census was conducted, it was very bizarre why they would pull out just that one little neighborhood, that one little, it's like a part of a neighborhood, and it got roped in with the others. But anyways, to make the map work, as she mentioned, that was happened. So all the maps have this anomaly right there at the bottom where it hooks around. And so I personally, you know, the map submitted by Spear is my favorite. Obviously, there needs some adjustments made because the deviation is too much. I, in full transparency, I did work with Councilmember Rodriguez a little bit, and we kind of brainstormed a little bit on the Spear map and made some changes to it, which seemed to be, would make it within deviation. So is there any way? Well, first of all, let council comment on anything, but I think I would like to see that map and see if we can do some tweaks to it. But do anybody else like to jump in here before?
Well, talking about the other maps, I think we go back to the same problem that we had last time with A3 and A4, that area that you're talking about. If we concentrate on the contiguous part of it, that little section down there is not contiguous with the other, the other part of District 4. Because there is no way to cross the freeway down there. You would have to come through, across C Street, through District 1 to get to the rest of District 4 down there. So that, the contiguousness is not there for those two, as opposed to A2, which it does encompass all the way up to C Street, so that part would be contiguous.
I like the contiguousness, that was very fluid.
I don't know if it was worth it, but I'm going with it.
So, and I apologize, I'm, I'm looking at your name tag, you're not Randy Mort, I know that, but I forget, I'm sorry. Liz, that's right, Liz. So Liz, could we, could we look at the Spear map with your little fancy tool that you have?
Okay. Public map number five is the Spear map.
So what we found by looking at this map is that District 1 was very heavy at about 5,500, and then we had another, the lowest district was like in the high 4. So there was, as you stated, a 13% deviation. So trying to get under that 10% deviation. So what it, what it ended up being is basically pulling, starting with District 1, and kind of chipping away, you know, staying within, just taking out census blocks, pull from 1, and then add that to 2, and then pull from 2 to add to 3, and then pull from 3 to add to 4, and then 4 to 5, it was like a domino effect. And by doing that, at least by our math, we came up with, with very, very similar numbers. And we didn't have to really mess with things. It's just a couple of the clean lines have a little bit of a jagged, so I don't know. Did the notes we gave you make sense?
For transparency purposes, can you describe the?
Yeah, so, so basically on, so on district number, so on district number, as we're seeing it on the map, which was district number 1, which is the orange, yeah, that district there, what we did is we took away the, we took away the lower census block that had 420 people in it, and actually added it into District, into District 2 below.
Okay, so this portion right here?
Yeah, there's a lower, on the lower, that little, there's a little outcropping right there, yeah. The bottom part of that was a 420-person census block. We pulled that out of the District 1 and added it into the 2.
So the whole, everything to the east in here?
Yeah, but just the 420. It wasn't the whole block. Because that block consisted of two census, that whole area was two census blocks, which amounted to 750 total, but we only wanted to take the 420 of it. It's hard to see on your map, but on the census map that has the blocks, it's easy to see, but.
That was, I just added 420 people into District 2.
Into 2, okay. And then, and then we actually took, on the, where District number 4 has that bottom flat line, at the bottom part, it kind of, it has a flat line that tees over into the, into the highway. We took the lower census block that was below that, which was 390. So if you go down, so you're, you're highlighting, no, the other one, sorry, not that district, the other, that one.
District 3?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes, District 3, yes, that one. That's one, yeah, right there. So if you scroll your cursor down to the bottom flat line, go down, wait, no, it's right there. So if you take, there's a, to the, if you shift to the right a little bit, there's a district right in there that has 390. It's a little more to the right, right in, right in that little, yes, right in that area.
Okay.
Sorry to have to walk you through, but. I don't know if you have the census. Do you have the map that has the census numbers on it? Because that would be super helpful if you did.
Staff gave me notes, but again, for transparency reasons, just talk me through it.
Yeah, so, so there's a census block that's, that's right up in that corner. It's up in the, up in the corner, that's 390.
So when you're saying corner, is what I'm clicking the right area, or no?
No, go over to the right.
Still in, still in 2.
Okay, so we're talking about 2?
Yeah, we're taking away from 2.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're taking away from 2, adding into 3, but it's in that corner.
Oh, I see.
Right there in that corner, it's 390, right there, right? Not all that, but yeah, up in the upper part. It's smaller than that, actually.
Sorry, this block is getting in the way. Okay. Is that, so that's 151 people?
I think you're too far south on that. If you can go a little bit further, you know, bring up that south end. There should be a block that's like 390.
Yeah, it's 390.
And not that?
Would it be easier if I handed you, we got one up here?
Okay, I got it.
Yes?
390?
Yeah. Could you hand that to her, Tim? Just, it would be helpful, just, just so she could see it. It would be, yeah, so it's 390 people right there in that little area.
Okay.
I believe you, I believe you have it, that looks accurate.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we've taken that from 2 and put it into 3?
Yeah, just so you know, that is attached to the census block. We might be able to adjust that.
How is it attached? Not on the census map, it's not?
It's, where is it?
It's yellow.
It's hard to see.
It's a yellow.
But it is there. But, but it's fine. That would still be considered okay.
Okay, all right. And then the next one we would be, was we go up to District number 4, which is the one up to the north. And where you have that slanted line there that goes at a 45-degree angle, below that, right where your cursor's at, there is two census blocks adjacent to each other. One is 40 and one is 330. And we took both of those and absorbed them into 4. Yep, that looks right, that one, and then a little bit, yeah, right in there somewhere. Yes, that's correct. So that was a total of 370. Okay? And then now moving up to the last one is District 5, which is the uppermost right corner up there. So we, we took a little census block right in the middle of the downward line, which is Curly and Boulevard. So there's the, so the far, yeah, that line that goes straight down, right there, right there, right about there, there's a little round census block that has 380 people. It has a, yeah, exactly. And we took that and put it into, into District 5, which was the lowest district. And by doing those changes, it seemed that the, it took the lowest, and of course, your numbers will reflect, and make sure our math is correct, but that would put the lowest district at 5,100 and the highest district at 5,205, which should be somewhere around 2%-ish of deviation, of variation between the highest and lowest.
Yeah, this is a very balanced map.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like the total deviation is about 2%.
2%, yeah. So this is something that, it's like a lot of work. I have to really give, kudos to Bonnie for some of that. But that's what, I mean, this, this map, I, at least, this works very well, staying with. And so, I mean, this is, I very much like this map. I liked it when I saw it. But of course, the deviation was way off at 13. But with those changes, you know, the only, I, I have to say, the only broad thing which we talked about in the last meeting was, that we felt was important, was that Galt High School was in District 1 or 2 because we felt that's where the majority of the students. But after further thought, after further thought, you know, I mean, we don't have any control over the school. The school district, you know, the school's controlled by the school district, and they have their own districts, and those are the representatives that have their own districts and whatever. So it didn't really, think it was really a big hang-up for us to be like, why does the school really have to be in the same district as the students? I mean, we don't control the school anyways. We don't make decisions for the school. So it didn't seem like that, that one thing, it was more important to have the map contiguous than to do that, because we couldn't make it work. It's just too big of a census block. Just so you guys know that. So does anybody have any thoughts on this little creative thing we've made right here? I mean, I wish I could see it in color, but.
I was just going to say, is there any way we can see it other than yellow lines?
Yeah. Yes, we can.
So, there it is. Now, our thought was, obviously, all of us up here know that, you know, we have a lot of growth coming at Liberty Ranch, which is going to be that upper district, that 5 in the top corner. So obviously, by the time we get to the next census and these maps can be tweaked again, you know, Lot 5 is going to be very lopsided with anticipated build. So the joke that was made was, as soon as she gets that colored, can we zoom in on that? So that little bump there that's on 5, that little thing, we're calling that the pimple. We can just pop that pimple and just take that and put that back into another. Yeah, you can pop all the pimples and we should be good to absorb. That would be just, you know, thought at 2030 when we had to tweak these maps again because of the new growth. But, I mean, it's very fluid. You don't have that wraparound. You know, you do have, obviously, some crossing of 99 on the Green District, but it's still very, you know, really, everything right of the freeway in that district is either not built yet, or there's not really much that's different. So you really have very like-minded, like-minded-like neighborhoods that are, that are together. And it just, I don't know. I think Mr. Spear did a great job of, you know, at least initially this map, in my opinion. I don't know, council? I've already made myself's pitch, so it's up to y'all to talk about it now. What we discovered, go ahead.
Could you might be clear on District Four, what the boundary line on the bottom, what's due to?
For the, the city limit?
Between, no, but he's talking between District Three and Four.
Oh.
Green and yellow.
Between the green and the yellow, yeah.
Yeah. I think the bottom is Simmerhorn, or the, if I remember.
Simmerhorn to Corillian, up to...
Corillian coming down to Simmerhorn and then it goes over.
Is that Vauxhall?
Yeah, Simmerhorn.
I think, I think what the Vice Mayor is wondering is where his residence falls in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just, that's the question. She doesn't know that, but I'm telling you. I can tell him where his house is, can I not do that?
Yeah, 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 but that's, just a reminder, we can't consider.
No, I know that, we're not considering. He just wants to know. Can you move your cursor up? Keep going up, keep going up, keep going up, stop. Now go over to the right just a little bit, just a little bit more to the right, right? Keep going, a little bit more, no, to the right. Right there, no, go back. You're somewhere right in there.
Oh.
That's where you live, as far as I remember.
Of course, you moved.
Yeah, it's, it's in that vicinity. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Anyways, I'm not sure about everybody else, but. Matt, your thoughts?
I like it. Yeah, I'm grateful to the two of you for getting together and doing this because, yeah, this was, this was a lot.
So, if we, so if we liked this map, obviously you said we have, obviously it would have to be published and you'd have to do a special meeting because it has to be published for seven days for the public. But we could, but we could, we could talk tonight, obviously it's part of our thing to talk about what the sequencing would be with said map, right? Or does that have to stay till the next meeting?
I prefer to do it once we have the map.
Okay, so we would just defer that conversation then?
Yeah.
So is this a map we would like to publish and move forward with? By the way, I need to, I have to open the public hearing, right?
Yeah, Frank.
Yeah, I'm going to open the public hearing now because I forgot to do that. So I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. So, with the public hearing open, as the council is, you know, talking about this, anybody wishes to speak on this item, doesn't need to do a speaker card, right?
We do.
You do, okay. So if you want a fellow speaker card and come up and you can wish to speak on this particular matter, what's going to happen, just for viewers watching, is this map will not be finalized tonight. This map will be published because it has to be required to be published for seven days. It would be on the city's webpage, and then we would call a special meeting in seven days, such as this meeting, where we would then approve the map. And at that time, someone will also be, have an opportunity to speak at that meeting again about this map. Correct, Frank? Just, the special meeting that we would have to call in order for this to go the seven days, there would be an opportunity for the public, again, that would, to speak at that.
Absolutely, so this is really just to kind of zero in on the preferred map, and then at the next meeting, we would be introducing in ordinance with the actual map and selecting the sequencing. So if you don't speak tonight, you still have the opportunity to speak on that item next, next time. And it's not clear exactly when that special meeting will occur. We can discuss that after we get through this piece, to discuss logistics if that's the direction of the council.
I mean, obviously, look, the thing we talked about before is, no matter what map we have, we have to make the map compliant. Obviously, we have a lot of growth happening in Gault, and these maps, some of these districts are going to come out, be out of whack within the next two years before the next census. And there's nothing we could do about that because you can't, you can't factor more than 10% in that, so...
Yeah, but the good part is it's only, we're going to redistrict in four years from now anyway. It's not like we have to go the full 10 years. So by then, a lot more of those houses and everything up in District Five are going to be built and so the...
Well, but there's, there's also going to be some, you know, if the notch property develops, for example, there's also going to be new houses in Four. And if Fairway Oaks develops, well, actually, that's in Four as well. So Four and Five are going to see anticipated growth, which is going to really affect those, but... So Liz, I mean, so, I think we can, do we need any further direction with this?
Did you close the public hearing?
Nope. Anybody wish to speak, last chance? No? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, so the direction is to proceed with the map as we just adjusted and publish that, and we will talk about when to call a special meeting to conclude this.
Yeah, well, City Manager will work with the council on figuring out the date and time for that special meeting. But it'll be next week, probably Wednesday or Thursday, we're tentatively thinking.
Okay, all right. So, this concludes discussion on this item, we can move on? Is that correct, Frank?
Yes.
All right. All right, moving on to, we already did Item L1, so we will move on to Item L2, which is Finance and Human Resources Departments. Ms. Saunders?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're going to do a little seat shift here. Tonight, we are bringing you the fiscal year 2425 mid-year budget. And I, this is newer to me in this role, so I kind of lacked the depth that we, that Carlos has. So I'm going to introduce you to Carlos Solario. He's our Budget and Revenue Manager. He and Lana Nielsen, our Budget Analyst, live and breathe the budget. They've worked with all of the departments to bring the budget forward to you. So he's going to lead the presentation. There's a lot of slides, so we kind of put in there all of the detail. We'll go through them, you know, all the details on there. If you need to stop at any point, just let us know. But we're going to, in order to move through, you know, kind of just give you the overview of the slides. Go ahead, Carlos.
Thank you, Carly, for the introduction. Good evening, everyone. The agenda for tonight is to present you with an overview of the mid-year budget, followed by an overview at the fund level, present personnel salary and benefit requests, revenue and expenditure adjustments by fund, starting with General Fund, Measure Q, and funds supplemented by Measure Q, and the rest of the funds in the city budget. We will conclude with your and administrative budget responsibilities. An overview, so as you review or as you look at the presentation, you'll see two columns that will stand out, the revised budget and the mid-year budget. The revised budget includes the original budget, which you adopted back in June. Carryforwards, that is appropriation that was presented to you during the fourth quarter budget adjustment. And that includes commitments from prior years for capital projects, as well as purchase orders appropriated in the prior fiscal years. Now, the mid-year budget, so the mid-year budget is an opportunity for staff, as well as for council, to look at operations as of half of the year, and based on any new information, make adjustments to the budget. As promised, here's an overview of the entire city budget, which shows the impact and use of resources throughout all city funds. One thing to note, or something that's important here, is that all the existing funds have sufficient resources for the proposed mid-year budget adjustments. Measure Q is highlighted in red, just to note that Measure Q with the proposed budget will be using all of its resources. We will be getting into detail in the next few slides, actually, many slides, as pointed out by Carly, but we will be looking at all the different adjustments, including personnel adjustments and new requests.
Mr. Solario, can you go back to the previous slide? And there's a line, like in 54, Measure Q. Can you might be go around and explain, you know, the balance, 3.5 million, right?
Right.
And the revenue is 4.4?
Revenue is 4.4 million with expenditures of $8 million. So that would be a $3.5 million use of fund balance.
Okay, so that means expense is much higher than the revenue on Measure Q?
Yes.
And you know why?
Yes, we will get to the details of the Measure Q budget when we get to the Measure Q slide, and then we will be able to answer any questions and go into detail about what's included in this.
Yes, thank you. Just go to the next slide.
Starting with personnel requests, this table here shows some of the salary and benefit increases that have been approved over the year, that were not included in the adopted budget. As you can see on the table, the cost of insurance increased and the cost of, the share of retirement has decreased slightly. So, this applies to every employee in the city. And as we go through each slide, you will notice, and as you've reviewed the staff report, you've noticed reference to salary and benefit adjustments. That's where these salary and benefit adjustments come from. Included in this mid-year budget are several new positions, including the Market Manager, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, two Parks Maintenance Workers, specifically dedicated for the new development for community facilities District 2020-1. The Code Compliance Supervisor position and the Part-Time Office Assistant, both of which have been approved, the Code Compliance Supervisor was approved by the City Council earlier this fiscal year, and the Part-Time Office Assistant was approved by the City Manager. Even that's a part-time position.
Can you explain the, the two Parks Maintenance Workers? That cost is for the two, the one thirty-four, that's for the cost of the two?
That is correct.
And that is, when we look at costs, that's, is this total cost? Like, this isn't just wage costs, this encompasses the cost overall with, like, benefit?
Salary benefits.
Everything that comes with it, all the, all the, yeah, okay, thank you.
Also, included in this budget are several reclassifications, including the reclassification of the Economic Development Director to Assistant City Manager, the reclassification of a Senior Accounting Assistant in the Finance Department to Administrative Analyst, the HR Analyst, reclassification from HR Analyst One to HR Analyst Two, classification of the part-time Facilities Maintenance Worker to Lead Custodian, the Parks Office Assistant to Administrative Assistant, Special Events Manager to Deputy Director of Parks and Rec, which was listed as a new position. It's a, it's a new position, new classification as well. And the reclassification of the Engineering Technician to Project Manager. This last one was a position that was recently approved by the City Council and filled by the Public Works Department with an internal staff member.
I just wanted to note about the Market Manager on the last position as a new position. That is technically a reclass from the Assistant Special Events Manager. And we just put it in the new classifications because it is technically a new classification, a new...
Other salary and benefit or personnel requests included in the budget are incentives. The city offers as a benefit to staff incentives, which are basically earned by staff by completing educational programs, certifications required for the job. And so the list up here is basically a list of all the staff in the city that have invested in some form of training or certification to improve their professional development. Next, we have details on revenue and expenditure adjustments. Are there any questions before, on the personnel side, before we move on to new requests or revenue adjustments? No questions? All right. We'll start with the General Fund. Good news and bad news on the General Fund revenue. Bad news is that we anticipated decline in sales tax revenue, sales, general sales tax and safety sales tax. The good news is that property tax and charges for services saved the year by bringing in over half a million dollar increase in revenue.
You're saying, Mr. Solario, that we, there was a dip in sales tax revenue?
Correct.
Anticipated, it didn't...
Anticipated, yeah.
How is it anticipated?
We work with HDL consultants, which look closely at market trends and conception in the region. One of the biggest drivers is the fluctuation in gas prices, which drives up and down prices in everything else.
So when gas prices dip down, we lose sales tax, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Exponential adjustments in General Fund, starting with the Elected Department. We anticipate an increase of $31,800 in the Elected Department. The bulk of the increase is the Part-Time Office Assistant position mentioned earlier, and the remainder is legal cost and net salary adjustments. In the Administration Department, we anticipate a $5,000 increase in appropriations. This is a combination of factors, including salary savings from the Economic Development Department and other adjustments in the, in the department and the City Manager's office, and the reallocation of the Code Compliance Division to Administration.
You're referring to the, the division, the City Manager Division? That does not refer to the City Manager's position specifically. This is the City Manager Department, correct?
Correct.
Right, because of the code, because of the code enforcement being moved under that umbrella, right?
Correct. The non-departmental budget includes a decrease in appropriation of $700,000. The bulk of the decrease comes from the transfer to Parks and Recreation Fund. The transfer has been updated in accordance with the council policy, at 6% of the General Fund actual expenditures in prior year. The Police Department is expected to have approximately $166,000 in savings. The majority of it comes from salary savings and from turnover in the department. We do have a few new requests included, but they're offset by salary savings.
The bottom, I'm sorry, the, those items at the bottom, that list are the, those are the requested items?
Yes.
That are being asked for to come out of the salary savings? And the 309 is the total of those items?
Correct. That's the net savings of, net salary savings.
Okay, thank you.
Community Development Department is requesting a... Community Development Department is requesting an additional $64,000 in appropriation. The bulk of the appropriation request comes from a Part-Time Office Assistant position in the Department with a request for $45,000. And the next big item here is a request for ADU architect plans. Public Works Department has a request of $345,000 in appropriation. The biggest ticket item in the Public Works request is this staff augmentation contract that was recently approved by the City Council to provide additional engineering support The Library and Parks Department within the General Fund has a request of $237, close to $238,000. $222,000 of these are related to the Parks Improvements Project funded by ARPA funds, and this was also approved by the City Council. And the next item is a repair and maintenance project at the Library related to concerns with the lighting of the facility. And Measure Q, next item on the slides, the Measure Q budget has requests for increased contributions to the Parks and Recreation Fund, and then a combination of increases and decreases to the Lighting and Landscape District. We're looking at increasing the contribution to Parks and Recreation by $3.5 million, decreasing the contribution to the Northeast LNL by $95,000, increasing the contribution to the Westside Lighting and Landscape District by $30,000, and also an increase to the Lighting and Landscape District Number 3 by $5,800.
So the, the sales tax decrease that you mentioned earlier is obviously reflected up on the top because this is a sales tax-driven fund. So the $140,000 was the decrease we saw?
Correct.
Or actually, I'm sorry, it was the, yeah.
This is the portion applicable to the Measure Q Fund.
Right.
Looking at a decrease of $140,000, partly offset by $1,500 in interest income.
And the transfer, just for people that are looking, the transfer adjustment, or from, transfer to Parks and Recreation, that money is collected, and we've dedicated that money to Parks and Rec, which obviously, when it's collected, then transfers into the Parks and Rec Department to be allocated for what we've pointed.
Correct.
Right, okay.
I have a quick question. We've already collected some on the, the new community, or facility districts, correct? And where, what fund is that going into? Shouldn't part of that be going to Parks and Rec?
When, when you say the Community Facilities District.
Where the Tim Lewis Homes, aren't they in one of the new ones? The CFD?
Yeah, that's, that's in its own fund, so the funding for, for that district or request for that district will be presented specifically.
Okay, that's not part of the transfer into Parks and Rec, though?
No. No, this is exclusively Measure Q. Next, we're going to go into detail about the adjustments in the funds supplemented by Measure Q. In the Parks and Recreation Department, we are anticipating an increase in revenue, which, as I mentioned earlier, this is driven by the request for additional Measure Q funds, and we have an increase in appropriations of $1.5 million. These, the primary driver in this half, $1.5 million is the approval of the water slide project, which is $100 or $1.6 million. Other adjustments within the Parks and Recreation Fund are listed above. The Department made internal adjustments to be able to fund these requests and partially also make room within the available resources to make, or to fund the water slide project. And included in those adjustments, we're looking at several new requests and savings from the reallocation of the Corporation Yard Project, which reduced the Parks and Recreation Fund appropriation by $321,000, a reduction in the Chabon and Littleton Projects, and a reduction in capital equipment of $41,000. Any questions on the Parks and Recreation budget? Next are the Lighting and Landscape Districts. No change in revenue from assessments. The only change in revenue in the three Lighting and Landscape Districts is related to the contribution from Measure Q. As mentioned earlier, we've, we have to make changes to the budget to request new contributions from Measure Q. Also listed below are the items included as new requests in the Lighting and Landscape Districts. One of the, again, part of the Corporation Yard Project has been relocated from the Lighting and Landscape Districts to one of our impact fee funds, leaving or making room for $364,000 in appropriation in the Lighting and Landscape Districts. A reduction or the removal of the Carrington Boulevard Landscape Improvements Project from the budget also made possible balancing the Lighting and Landscape Districts and making room for other Measure Q projects. Any questions on the Lighting and Landscape District budgets? We're on to the Gas Tax Fund. This is known as the Streets Fund. There is an anticipated increase in revenue in the Gas Tax Fund. This is funded by Measure A supplemental funding, so this will result in a transfer from the Measure A Fund to the Streets Fund. And in terms of appropriation, we're looking at an increase of $192,000. And this includes several new requests. The most, most notable is the C Street Enhancements Capital Project. This project was originally budgeted as a two-year project, but staff were able to meet sooner or more rapid, more rapidly in this project and will be able to complete it before the end of fiscal year. So what you're seeing here is a request for additional appropriation that will be reduced from the second year of the budget. You'll see that reduction in the midterm budget. Any questions in the Gas Tax Fund?
What was the, the 2.6 million for Measure A? That Measure A, that's the county, that's the county measure, right? So that bump is just from, did we just get like a lump sum from that? Is that why the big increase? What is that?
The increase is to balance the Gas Tax Fund. They do not have sufficient resources to cover all the expenses. These expenses are eligible for Metro A funding, and staff are recommending a transfer to balance the fund.
Sure.
Just a quick curious question. I don't know who's been here longest. Have we seen a significant, or any difference in the, a drop in Gas Tax Funds with electric vehicles coming online?
Funding has remained pretty consistent. A lot of the funding that comes into the Gas Tax Fund also comes from competitive grants known as RMRA, and the city applies for these every other year and has been able to claim funding for those projects. Although alone from, from Gas Tax revenues, the revenues are not sufficient to cover the expenses, and that's why staff have on a regular basis recommended additional support from Measure A, which again, that's, that's what Measure A is also there for, to provide funding for road maintenance and repair.
Thank you.
Stormwater budget includes a net increase in appropriations of $33,600. And part of this is, or part of the new request includes funding for the cleanup of homeless campsites and stormwater infrastructure and salary and benefit adjustments. Water Fund. The Water Fund is anticipated to experience savings of about $8,000 net. This includes a combination of salary savings and again, savings from the reallocation of the Corpiere Project.
So it's actually a budget decrease?
Correct.
How does water rate increases affect that? This is the, water, our water, our yearly CPI increases for water are, go to 0.5, right?
Yes.
And so those, those increases are just reflected into the general revenue of this particular fund?
Right. Something to keep in mind with the water rate structure is that it doesn't only fund current year operations, but it also builds up the reserve for contingency, and it provides funding for future projects that are on the horizon as required by state mandates and other regulations.
Right. So in layman's terms, basically if, there might, we might be even, some may think that we bring in X amount, and then that's, and then those, that whatever that amount means is our expenditures, and it should be even, but in fact, it does build a reserve because this is very common, state could come and say, you need to do something, your water, your well needs to have, I don't know, just making this up, but your wells, all of a sudden, your arsenic levels need to be at, you know, one, you know, two parts per billion instead of three parts per billion, and so now we have to make upgrades to the well or dig a well, all that kind of stuff, and then that's where we dip into that money to make those, right? So we don't have to go into other funds and, right?
Right. And that, that saves the city on emergency loans at high interest rates.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Waste Water Fund. The Waste Water Fund anticipates an increase in appropriations of $87,000. This is a net increase of savings from the Corpiere Project reallocation and an increase in billing and postage services as well as salary and benefit adjustments. Fire Range Fund anticipates savings of $79,000. This is a result of savings. The original budget included an appropriation for professional services remediation of lead in, in the fire range. However, the recent project, the recent renovation of the range covered those costs with creating savings and no need for additional hiring of special services. That's what's driving the savings in this fund. Transportation Fund. The Transportation Fund is anticipating savings of $267,000 in appropriations. Again, this is the result of the reallocation of the Corpiere Project and minor increases and salary and benefit adjustments as mentioned earlier. Intergovernmental Streets Fund, this is a grant, grants fund essentially, and we're anticipating an increase in both revenue and expenses. All the expenses listed in this fund are grant-funded. These include the Safe Streets Roads For All Study, the C Street Enhancements Project, Walnut Avenue Improvements Project, and the Emerald Vista Trail Extension Project, all grant-funded.
I just want to be clear on this. You're saying that none of this money comes from our General Fund, and it is all grant funding?
That is correct.
So when people come and say that these projects are being paid for out of the General Fund, they are incorrect.
Right. These $10 million you see in the mid-year budget are all grant-funded.
Thank you.
To piggyback on Mr. Reed's question, I would like to ask another question, which was brought up in the public, let's just say. Money that was spent on C Street, that money specific, that money, we couldn't have taken that money that we did the C Street project and just, you know, went over and, you know, finished the skate park, or, you know, passed that into the Water Fund to offset something. I mean, that, this money is very specific when we get this money, right?
Correct.
Comes with a lot of strings attached, very specific things that have to do with the actual project, the way it has to be done, and, and all that.
All these grants are competitive grants, and the Department of Public Works applies for these grants and competes with other cities for funding. The C Street, for example, C Street Project, the city had to compete with many other agencies to get a portion of the funding available. And so Mr. Griffin here can speak more in detail about how this works, but traditionally, how the state looks at these is see which one yields the best benefit to the community, and so the amounts of water are based, are based on that score, and so, thanks to Public Works and the team investing time.
So to use a little analogy for the public, because I, I think there's, there's a big misconception in the public right now that we're winding down on C Street right now. So if, so if someone came to me and said, we'll give you $100,000 to put a pool in at your house, but it can only be used to put a pool in, can't use it for anything else. I have a choice to either put that pool in, I can't, I'd say, well, can I use it for landscaping? My front yard really could use some landscaping, and my house really has bad paint on it, and my neighbors are telling me how bad the paint is, and how bad the landscaping is. But I can't use $100,000 for that. So I have a choice to say yes or no on using that money for the pool, or I can just say no and don't get the pool. Would that be a good analogy of money that comes from grants like that?
That's right.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
It actually makes me feel better that the state isn't, or any entity, because certainly this, I wouldn't approve the city doing this, walking up to anybody or entity and saying, I have a million dollars for you, do whatever you want, I don't care. So, I mean, we want to know where the money is being spent and how, and that it's being spent wisely and for a purpose that is good for the community, so, yeah.
And just to very briefly tag on what Carlos brought up, for C Street, you know, the project budget, all components, engineering, construction, inspection, it's a little more than $8 million. Out of that, almost $6 million of that is grant funding. So that project is roughly three-quarters grant funding, and then the revenue is from RMRA and other state and local gas taxes. And there's a very small component of our Water and Sewer Fund where we upgraded water lines in the project area while we were constructing the roadway.
Right. So we didn't say, instead of putting some new benches over at such and such park, or, you know, stuff like that, we're going to go ahead and do a C Street project. This was not, nothing, nothing, nothing got skipped over somewhere else in the city to do that project. Yeah, thank you.
There's no additional questions, so we'll move on to the next one. The Impact Fee Fund for, Fund 11, this is known as the Capital Acquisition Fund. This fund primarily is composed of revenue from impact fees for use in expansion of services in the city. You've heard throughout the presentation, the reallocation. You've heard throughout the presentation, the reallocation of the C Street project, that's what you see in, in this request for appropriations here, the one-point-three-million dollars, a million and a quarter is related to C, to the Corpiere project. As you may recall from previous presentations and, and previous requests for, for approval, the Corpiere project includes, started as an emergency project and involved with larger scope as the staff looked into it and found out that there was a greater need for improvements and expansion of work area for staff as the city has expanded its services over the years. And so this is where all those reallocations mentioned earlier are, are going into various sufficient fund balance in this fund to cover the expense as well as incoming revenues in the fiscal year. Impact fees are charged on development, so what you see here are fees that the city collects from developers. There's a nexus that maybe Amy and, and Mr. Arias here can.
Yeah, every time, good evening, Council and Mayor, yeah, every time there's construction, new construction in the city, they pay a variety of what we call impact fees, and the intent of it is to offset the impact of development on that specific item. So in this case, we have an impact fee for capital or city improvements typically for facilities. So as a city grows and we have a need for new facilities, like offices, you know, storage yards, whatever it be, those are eligible uses of them as fund because the expansion of the offices or whatever the facility is, is a result of development.
Thank you, Chris.
Next is the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Fund. Similarly funded, these are again, revenues from development, and this budget is actually experiencing savings of half a million dollars in the budget. We had budgeted for half a million dollars for the replacement of turf at Walker Park. However, as you may have heard in fiscal year twenty-four, that project was completed exclusively with grant funding, and there was no need to make use of these funds. Funding is back into fund balance and is available for other projects in the future. Sacramento Transportation Authority Fund, known as Measure A. As mentioned earlier, there is a request to, for a contribution of two-point-eight-million dollars from Measure A to the gas tax fund, known as the Street Fund. And also the readjustment of the C Street enhancements, portion of the project budgeted in Measure A with an increase of six-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars in the budget, given the timeline of the project. Fund Thirty-Eight exclusively funds police services. There is an anticipated increase in appropriation of twenty-three thousand dollars. This is a combination of salary savings, small portion of salary savings, and an increase in appropriations for the share of cost of the cost allocation or reimbursement to the general fund for central services. Measure R Fund, similar to General Fund and Measure Q, is anticipated to have a decrease in revenue of approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars, eighty-nine thousand dollars in sales tax revenue. And this is currently the, the economy. As far as expenditures, we anticipate a seventy-nine-thousand-dollar increase in expenditures. Several factors here, it's a net increase resulting from, again, savings from the Corpiere project reallocation, and we have salary and benefit adjustments as well as a few other requests within the police department, including training for K-9 officer with the twenty-five-thousand-dollar request and appropriation. Solid Waste Fund is anticipating a nine-thousand-dollar increase in appropriations. This is all related to billing, cost billing and postage. And the Community Facilities District Two Thousand Twenty dash one, as mentioned earlier, excuse me, has an anticipated request in appropriation of fifteen-thousand dollars. This budget also includes the new positions mentioned earlier. There's, in a reallocation of funds within the operations, that's why you only see a fifteen-thousand-dollar overall increase as opposed to the hundred-and-sixty K-plus that we mentioned with the new request for the two positions, for parks maintenance, or landscape maintenance, I should say. Citizens Option for Safety Fund anticipates a thirty-four-thousand-dollar increase in appropriations. Part of it is unfunded pension liability costs, twelve-thousand-dollar request for overtime to offset turnover within the department and ninety-eight-hundred-dollar salary and benefit increase. And Successor Agency Funds, what we see here is basically programming enough revenue and appropriations for the incoming property taxes and our bond obligations. These four funds basically house all the operations of the successor agency. We receive the funds in the redevelopment agency fund and pay our obligations of the successor agency fund, with the city being the successor agency. And so what the adjustments you see here are based on this year's anticipated revenue and our bond obligations as it relates to this redevelopment agency bond. One of the action in the resolution of the mid-year budget adjustments includes year-end administrative responsibilities, including the use of General Fund or, and/or Measure Q to fund negative operating deficits in the Parks and Recreation Fund and the lighting and landscape districts. Similar scenario with the gas tax fund and the Transportation Development Act. There is a request for authority to balance those two funds should there be a deficit at the end of the fiscal year. As usual, the city manager would be authorized to carry over encumbrances and capital commitments or committed funding for capital projects at the end of the fiscal year. And this would also authorize the city manager to make revenue and expenditure appropriation adjustments, as long as these are offset by an offsetting revenue source, and also to make administrative technical corrections to the budget if these are less than seventy-thousand dollars each. Any questions on the year-end administrative duties or in the presentation in general?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Salario. The only thing, if you look at the fund, fund balance sheet, right? And the bottom of that sheet, we start the balance two oh three, six seventy-three, right? And then fund balance is negative twenty-nine million, four eighty-three, two oh six, right? So that, what was the reason, that's, that's a year we was going in the negative, right?
That twenty-nine million represents the use of fund balance throughout all the city funds.
Okay, and then the fund balance left a hundred-and-seventy, one ninety-five, right? So that's mean we start two oh three and left one seventy-four.
That is correct.
What you think, Ajay, especially it's, it's going negative or how are you going to come back like next year, next year? What was the reason is, is going to the negative? Just a basic question on, on that.
Yeah, the use of fund balance is, again, a big portion of this, or a portion of this is related to Measure Q. And the, that's a three-and-a-half-million-dollar increase or also three-and-a-half-million-dollar use of fund balance. So we have those in savings and the proposal is here is that, is that much is used out of savings. So that twenty-nine million you see there is basically use of savings within the city total budget to fund the new request and the budget carried over from prior year as well as any appropriation increases that the council has approved throughout our year-to-date in the current fiscal year.
Well, I think.
So I, I kind of share the Vice Mayor's concern on that because there are a lot of people in the city that look at these numbers, right? They look at our budget and they don't have the opportunity sometimes to sit and hear you guys explain this, it goes into this fund, it comes out of this fund, it goes here. They'll look at these numbers and they'll see exactly what the Vice Mayor said. We started off with two-hundred-and-three million, we ended with a hundred-and-seventy-four, right? What, with the other cities in the area like Lodi and Stockton and all these other cities that are starting to have financial problems, what would you say to our citizens that go, hey, I see a problem here, where, you know, if we keep going at this rate, we're eventually going to run out of money?
Something to consider, as I, as I mentioned, this includes, a good portion of these use of fund balance comes from carryovers from prior year. So essentially, that carryover was savings to last fiscal year. So that, that carryover isn't an increase necessarily to the use of resources, but it's savings from last year. Similarly, when we come to the end of this fiscal year, we will realize savings in the current fiscal year, those savings, and that appropriation will carry over into the next fiscal year, and that's where we will exhaust the resources. Now, in terms of the health condition of the, the city, looking at that use of twenty-nine million dollars in fund balance, out of two-hundred-and-three, I wouldn't be, I'm not concerned personally from the budget perspective because there are enough resources. As compared to other cities, if you, if you look at the city of Lodi budget, not to put them on the spot, but they, they're running a deficit and they don't have the fund balance to cover it. That's, you know, that's a red flag, that's a concern, when you don't have the resources or the, the savings, the fund balances, or the reserves to cover those, those costs.
What happens when it comes to the year when we don't have those reserves, right? If that number, if that estimated ending balance keeps going down, it's going to come to zero at some point, and I would rather us address it now than address it in, well, twenty, thirty, six years from now?
I want, I want to give a stab at like, you know, that fund balance and the good position that we're in now. So for me, like, I can provide, you know, assurance to the city residents that, you know, there is an overall conservative use of all of the funds, but especially the general fund. You know, the general fund is, you know, the, the funds that we can use for basically any emergency, any item of note, and the city recently has engaged in a lot of projects that a lot of that money goes to, which is like one-time cost, and those are good benefits for the city. You know, they go into expanding parks, they go into skate park, the slide. What's important to avoid, I think what you're getting at, is to make sure we don't get into a structural deficit where we are spending more of the general funds and other funds for ongoing regular cost. And I think the finance department in the city, you know, in the past handful of years, has done great to keep within that, to avoid that structural problem, to get to the, the situation that you are describing. And my, my goal here for the remainder of my time is to make sure that we don't get into that structural imbalance where we are relying on fund balances to pay regular ongoing bills. But for projects and one-time costs, that's a council decision on whether or not it's worthy amenity for the city.
Yeah, I, I would like to make another, I like, I like using analogies because I think people understand them a little easier, but, and I'm not claiming to be some financial expert, but I, I mean, if, if I'm bringing in X amount of money in my household, but I'm spending less than I'm making, obviously, you know, that's the goal, is to spend less than you make, or else you're going to run a deficit. If I, if I over six months or a year have now built up sufficient savings, and then on top of that, I put away like a rainy day fund that I never touch unless it's an absolute catastrophe, which the city does, and we never touch it, even during COVID and some things where we could have dipped, we never did. And then we dip, we, but we'll, you know, come along and say, hey, I want to buy a new refrigerator, I want to buy, you know, a new, new sofa for, for the house. I then dip into that money, not the reserve, but the money that I've been building up to, to buy those one-time costs. I'm not like getting a new car payment or, 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 you know, bringing on a new, you know, taking a second out of the mortgage, which creates an ongoing cost that's now going to shrink, you know, the difference between what I make and what I spend. My simple question would be, just to make the, the people, the people of Galt reassured is, does the city of Galt spend less than we make? It's a simple answer, do we? On ongoing? We don't spend more than we make?
Yes and no. Part of our obligation here is to, to spend some of these resources, and the reason I say yes and no, it's because, I say no because we, we present a budget, a balanced budget to you on a regular basis. What you see here, and I'd like to go back to that slide, I realized I went back on my computer, but not on, on the screen up here, is to show you where those uses of fund balances exist. So for example, the general fund, we're looking at a use of fund balance of two-point-seven million dollars. Mostly is carryovers from prior fiscal year. Out of the twenty-nine, the biggest use of fund balance comes from other funds that we're basically not obligated to spend, but yes. Looking at utilities, the wastewater fund and the, and the water funds, we're looking at a seven-million-dollar use in a fund balance in the water fund. As mentioned earlier, we collect those fees and the expectation of the residents is that by charging those fees for a service, we are addressing the needs of, of the city by making the improvements required for compliance with state and federal regulations. And so if we didn't use those funds for those projects that we said we were going to use them, we would not be in compliance with our.
Right. That, that was a poor, that was a poor, I phrased the question poorly in those respects, I, and I get that after, after I said that, the answer, I'm like, okay, I didn't mean it like that, I just meant that we're not deficit spending, would be a more accurate.
Correct.
Right. I mean, we had an auditor that came, which is an independent auditor we're required to do, who gave a presentation, what, like two meetings ago, that, that basically gave us a stellar, you know, review, which to be honest with you, made me feel happy because, you know, two of us were sitting up here in 2018 when we were talking about not mowing parks and trying to figure out how we could avoid laying off employees and stuff, because we had a major financial problem. I mean, we are light years away from that now. I would also like to point out, just for the public, that, you know, the main source of income for the city of Galt is property tax. That's the meat and potatoes of our funding, which is a pretty stable revenue source. I mean, we wish sales taxes was more, it's really not, we have a sales tax leakage, but that has fluctuated as we saw in here, but that's not really a big, big source of our funding compared to property tax. We would have to literally go into another housing crisis or some kind of thing like that before we would see a major blow to that. So it's a pretty stable. So it's a pretty stable, a pretty per-stable predictable source. And with more housing coming online, whether we like it or not, there's, that revenue source is going to be boosted. Is that is that is that an accurate assessment?
That's inaccurate.
All right, again, I'm not a financial guy, I'm just trying to look at it through common person eyes, but yeah. Thank you, Mr. Salaro, that's all I had to say.
I just have a quick question, or I have a couple of questions, but one, that, and now I can't remember the term that it is, the from the redevelopment funds that commissioned that we have to be a part of, are we ever going to get out of that?
Pretty soon. We have adopted and and gotten approval for the last and final drops. So we're looking to dissolve and be done with that by 2030, assuming everything goes.
Five more years. Okay, it just seems like we spend all the money on staff time to come, anyway, it just seems silly to me, but, okay, yay, five years. My other question kind of goes along with some of some of what they were saying. So looking, and I'm glad Armando just walked back in, so looking at the the turf field, for example, and so we apparently received a grant. So now we didn't, whatever money we had said we were going to use, the five hundred thousand that we were going to use to replace the turf. So my question is, on circumstances like this, are we, we know the turf has to be replaced, I don't know, every ten years, is that?
Typical lifespan is eight years, but we were able to get eleven out of this last one.
Okay, but so let's let's plan on eight then, just in case, right? So that five hundred thousand dollars that we saved or any of these savings, are we going to not necessarily set them aside and earmark them for, but are we saving for these big expenditures that we know are coming? Like wastewater and everything, we know that we have to pay even though it looks like they're making money. But because we anticipate, we know that big costs are going to come down the road, such as replacing a turf field. Are we saving for those kind of things?
So what we would do on a major project like that is put into the CIP that only goes out five years or beyond the five years. So obviously, we would put that beyond the five years and then look at finances at that point. But that money would stay in that pot until it's time to used or it is earmarked for that.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to add that, as I mentioned earlier, those five hundred thousand dollars go back into fund balance. The fund balance you see available in the parks capital fund, Fund Twelve, that's available for purposes of making parks improvements or expansion in in parks. Another portion of that is also in Fund Eleven exclusively for Parks and Recreation.
Well, my other comment is a huge thank you. I don't think we can thank staff enough for going after grants and saving us these money, you know, monies and keeping us in the black for other funds that that, I've done grants, I hate them. So, I mean, more power to you, thank you so much for going through all of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Salaro? Any public comment on this particular item?
Chris Brosman.
Good evening again, City Council, very enlightening meeting as far as, you know, listening to the numbers. Tim, I'd like to say thank you for bringing up the concern on the thirty million because that is a big on the negative side. And I think all of us as citizens are going to be looking for the future years to make sure that, you know, when you look at this budget, there's so many smoke and mirrors from a layman's purpose looking at it in my mind. I've been involved now looking at these budgets for multiple years and there's still so much movement. I'm passionate about Measure Q, as some of you guys are aware. And one of my first things I wanted to do is remind all of the council members that the purpose of Measure Q was to supplement, not replace, general funds. Now, interesting tonight, I didn't know this walking through the door, you know, we were blessed with a four-point-four million dollar Measure Q fund this year. What I just learned is we spent eight million dollars. Truthfully, I don't know where that eight million dollars went to Measure Q. That's concerning to me. I'd like to see a breakdown on the Measure Q dollars that are being allocated. So we've got a negative deficit, as I listened to you, of three-point-six million dollars. That three-point-six negative is going to roll till next year and come out of the four-four if we came in with a level budget next year. So you take a four-four, which we we've already budgeted two, two-point-three million dollars towards increased wages as far as lighting or landscaping crews. So reality, we're already going to be at a negative next year with Measure Q and effectively do nothing. To me, that's concerning. Corporate yard was something I heard a lot and I'm not sure, you know, and I can do a one-off on that, but did Measure Q fund the entire corporate yard? Because it looked like that according to the way I'd read your P and Ls or asset sheets is that everyone else got reallocated and all those dollars moved to Measure Q. If the entire city is going to use the corporate yard and not be charged rent, I don't know that that's something that should happen. Now, maybe I'm reading wrong, I'd like to know if I'm reading wrong. The state of California is going to have a forty-five billion dollar deficit this year, guys, that's what they're predicting. Do you think we're going to get more money from the state of California next year? It's not going to happen, in fact, they'll claw back some of the dollars that they've already told you you're going to have. On top of that, they're going to come out with a few more requirements for you to do, that's going to cost the city more money. You got to increase tariffs coming along, that's going to impact the state's revenue sources as well, exporting and importing. I think we need to be hesitant or cautious with the economy going into 2026, to be frank with you, and probably the rest of 2025. And yet, I see three new positions coming on tonight's venue. I'm not sure what they're going to bring, you know, market manager, to be frank with you. I think we can use that as long as we're looking towards allocating towards, they're going to show growth within that market fund. They're going to run it like a business that it should be run. A deputy of Parks and Recreation, I'm not sure exactly why we need a deputy of Parks Recreation. I'm real happy with our director of Parks and Recreation. A lead custodian kind of stood out to me as well. I don't know how many custodians we have, I thought we contracted our custodians, but maybe I'm wrong on that. Last time I walked down that road, we promoted somebody September of last year. And then we ended up with another code enforcement officer coming along after it type deal. So I kind of looked like and go, okay, we got a lead custodian, who are they going to lead? I see, I'm out of time, guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Mr. Salaro, would you, could you elaborate at all on the Measure Q questions?
Yes, as far as the Corpiet project, as mentioned throughout the the presentation, the Corpiet project was originally allocated to several funds, including Parks and Recreation, the lighting and landscape districts. What this mid-year budget does basically takes away all that appropriation from all those funds and exclusively funds the project with the use of impact fees. So these frees up appropriation in those funds that are dependent from Measure Q. So what you see here or what you've heard related to the Corpiet project, it's not an increase in appropriations, it's a decrease to make the funding available for other projects. The biggest ticket item here is the water slide project.
And then as far as the revenue versus the, you know, the total, the total Measure Q expenditures, as I'm looking at my sheet, was four-point-six million, and then the mid-year adjustment is eight million. Could you explain all that to us again as far as how much you're bringing in? And and then there's the transfers, there's the lighting landscape stuff, so it gets a little confusing on that part about seeing the lighting landscape money coming in, and could you just kind of cover that slide again? It was Measure Q Fund fifty-four.
Measure Q Fund, so in terms of revenue, we're experiencing a decrease as, you know, Measure Q is funded by sales tax.
Right.
And appropriations, total appropriation requests here are eight million dollars. So we bring in four-point-four and we're using eight million and making use of that three-point-four in fund balance. So that three-point-four is sitting in savings and we are now proposing to use all of it.
So the three-point-four, the three-point-four sitting in savings was what we collected prior year from Measure Q? So we collected that money, but we didn't use it yet, we were still deciding what to use it. And then this year, we took in four-point-six million. So we're now taking that three billion and that that three-point-five million and that four-point-six million, and we're putting them together. And that makes the eight million that we're now allocating out to for projects such.
And a lot of what was spent, the big, we purchased things, correct? So one-time expenditures came out for equipment and things like that, correct?
The major expenses were the slide, the skate park, the staffing that was brought up to to take care of the park maintenance issues. So those were the major costs for the first two years.
Yeah, I mean, I I specifically remember we were presented, when I say we, the previous city council was presented with an option not long ago to go out for like a bond and then or a loan and then, well, inform a bond and then to to get a bunch of money to, you know, buy a bunch of things and spend it all at one time. But the problem with that, it was going to require a massive amount of interest. And also, it was going to basically tie up the majority of the incoming money from Measure Q for quite a few years, leaving us with very little left over in each year. The council at the time, which was basically Paul and I that are that are here now, we we pushed against that and we decided not to do that. We didn't want to basically commit ourselves, commit the Measure Q money that far in advance. So we we decided to hold off. And so we are looking at spending things and looking at projects coming on the horizon and anticipating that money coming and spending. But we are definitely not going into like spending like, you know, the perception that we're spending a year ahead or more than a year ahead is, as Mr. Salaro explained, is we're not doing that, is that correct?
That is correct. The proposal is within the available resources.
Right, okay.
And can I can I point out something for the parks since that seems to be the focus of the Measure Q? We're we're still working on our master plan, we went to Parks and Rec Commission last week. They plan on bringing in an assessment of all the facility needs right after May. And then after that, they should come to you with the presentation with full cost. And then you guys at that point can start deciding how to allocate in the future going forward.
This is this is the want list that we've gathered from the community, from all the outreach we've been doing for several months.
Correct.
Come to us, and this is what the priorities, based on the public input, that the public would like to see where those monies be spent first, and we'll then we'll make those decisions.
Along with costs to repair bathrooms, buildings, pavilions.
Yeah, maintenance, but also just in general, like where can we spend that Measure Q money, right? It's a it's a forecast of where it can be spent.
Yeah, so you'll have that that report by the end of this year, so you guys can start allocating money or earmarking it for your priority.
All right, thanks for that, Armando, thanks to Mr. Salaro. I had another question, but I forgot what it was. It was, council, is there any more public comment? No. Mr. Mr. Lee, you can fill out a, just come on up and say your name. Yeah, for future, you need to turn in a card when you want to speed, okay? I'm going to lay you off the hook right now because I want to speed the meeting along.
I'm Ken Lee, I wanted to know who's the watchdog for these out of country? Who's collecting the sales tax and making sure that they're paying their fair share? Also, you know, things like Tmu and Alibaba, how do you know they're not fixing the books and not paying us the full sales tax? And because they control the banks, they control the businesses. And I want to know how much the flea market sales from the vendors paying the sales tax of this town?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is that the end of public comment? Okay. Do you have any additional questions for Mr. Salaro?
Mr. Lee. Mr. Kane, I can very sure that, you know, the sales tax, every business, they fill up the sale tax seat, they pay to the state. So every end of the month, everybody fill up the sale tax, whatever they collect, and then they fill up the sale tax. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Salaro, additional questions? All right, I I do say that should anyone in the public want any explanation of any of this stuff, they're more than happy to send an email to the finance department and we can, or one of us council members, and we can request a certain piece of the budget be sent to them if they would like. This is obviously, you know, posted, this is a trans, this is a public document, so just want to make sure the public understands that this is all available, so if they would like to dig into it further. With that, we we're looking for a resolution to adopt the these midterm changes. No further questions, council? Okay, without be looking for an adoption to authorize and propose changes fiscal year FY twenty-twenty-four to twenty-five budget, authorize use of general fund, Fund Zero-One, and Measure Q, Fund Fifty-four, resources to offset operating deficits in specific funds as as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Number three, authorizing just a sacrament of Transportation Authority Fund Zero-Two-Nine, resources to offset operating deficits in the gas tax fund, Zero-Zero-Two, and then stormwater fund, Zero-Zero-Three, and Transportation Development Act Fund, Zero-Zero-Nine. And number four, authorize administrative actions required to implement the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. Looking for a motion to for that resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Rodriguez. Seconded by Councilmember Pratton, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Motion approved five-zero. Moving on to item three, L-three, it is the approval of the new market manager position, Deputy Parks and Recreation Director and Lead Custodian, classification, salary ranges, the revised salary schedules for the unrepresented mid-management unit and the Galt Public Service Unit. This is being done by who? Ms. Kobe, okay, go ahead, it didn't it didn't say in here, so sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are asking you to approve three new classifications. With these new classifications, we're not adding any full-time equivalent, they are replacing other classifications. Any questions?
So explain, it was, because it was brought up, the Lead Custodian Classification, that's, we're reclassifying someone from?
Right, the person who's in the part-time facilities maintenance worker position is performing duties outside of the job specification. So that's why we created a classification based on the duties that they're actually doing.
Okay. But that but that position is, is that position coming with a a promotion, so to speak? I mean, a promotion in name, it appears for sure, but?
Technically, yes, it would be a promotion, we did study this new position, and it's based on the comparable classifications.
This is the position, Chris, that we had spoken about some time ago?
Yeah. You know, the custodian position was working part-time for the city for a number of years. And the number of hours put in per week, you know, bordered on full-time and based on the quality of service from this person and. and it just made sense that the right thing to do is to make her full-time.
Okay. Can you tell us about the Deputy Parks and Recreation Director position?
Yes, this would be the second-in-command position overseeing recreation and special events. So with that, we're eliminating the special events manager and the assistant special events manager.
Right, so we're shifting, we're essentially shifting person from one job and it?
Overseeing a different?
Reclass, naming them a different title and moving them to a different position. So we're not creating a new person.
Correct. It would be like a succession plan for the person in the special events manager position.
Right, but it's not a position that, it's not, we're not, we're not adding a body.
Correct, yes, yeah. So when I refer to FTE, that's what I mean, full-time equivalent.
The body that we are adding though is the new market manager. That is going to be a new position.
It is a new position, but we are replacing the assistant special events manager, which is vacant.
Right, okay, yes, yes, so, all right. Thank you for the clarification on that. So these are positions that I'm aware of, that I've been talking to city manager for some time. Council, you have any questions on this stuff? You need some elaboration on some stuff?
I don't have a question because I too met with the city manager over it. I think this is a sign that we are growing and we need more help. And looking at the, at the past on, on how kind of crazy things got from the pub, from what the public was seeing, I think this is a great move because Armando's wonderful and he's a superstar, but he is only one man. And he needs a right-hand person to help and, and to help facilitate, facilitate everything. I personally am probably the biggest cheerleader to have someone specific that their only job is to focus on that market. Because I'm like you, Mr. Brosman, they, you know, this is a great opportunity that GALT has here and we have an opportunity maybe to bring in someone who, that is their main focus and maybe that's what they were in their past lifetime, whatever, that can bring in a fresh perspective and, and, and focus on that. Whereas who's running it right now is wonderful and she's been doing a bang-up job. But she's been doing two jobs, so just how much better can everything be if people were actually focused on what we need them to be focused on? So I am a big fan of this move personally.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I, I think that it's just when you have somebody trying to wear too many hats, you know, they're doing a good job, but there's only so much there is. And we, I just, I've always felt that, you know, we need to have our Parks and Rec people focus, be able to focus on Parks and Recreation and, you know, our director be able to oversee the Parks and Recreation because that's his job. And I feel like, you know, the market is basically our golden goose. And I think that it is, you know, we're in a position to take a swing at the fence. And, you know, instead of trying to get singles, we need to be swinging for triples and home runs. And that market, you know, we've, we've, we've stopped the bleeding. You know, we had declining revenue for many years. That stopped. And it's been stabilized and I, I think, you know, the staff for that. And it's great news based on the predictions that we were getting in 2018. But I think we know, but I would like to see if, what, what, what's the possibilities out there? And what could be done with the market in the hands of someone from the outside and someone could be brought in fresh and, and given the freedom to do whatever. Maybe it'll, maybe it'll be a good, it'll be good. Maybe it won't do any improvement. But, you know, I can tell you from someone who's been self-employed for 30-some years, you know, nothing risked, nothing gained. So I think it's, it's a solid thing that I'm happy to see and time will tell. Anybody else got any comments?
Uh, thank you. I'm just looking, these two position, as Teresa mentioned, this is not a new position. This is kind of promotion, right?
For the market manager, is that?
Market manager and Deputy Park Recreation Director.
So the market manager is replacing the assistant special events manager, which is a position that was in the GPSU and it's vacant right now. So we're eliminating that position and adding the market manager. And the Deputy Parks and Recreation Director is replacing the special events manager.
Okay, thank you. And these two position, there can be some money involved. And, you know, when the money involved, I, I agree with my colleague, but it's always, this is a public money, this is a citizen's money. And I will support the thing. The only thing I would like to ask the city manager, these two position, what they can do? We want to see the result, we want to see the action. And could you might be, I know you explained to me, but could you explain to the public, these, when we bringing these two position, what they're gonna do? What kind of improvement we're looking at the?
Well, so, you know, in the two, I'll start with the market manager. You know, that one's pretty clear by the title. You know, they will essentially manage the functions of the market. And our goal with that is to bring someone in with a retail wholesale hospitality background that, you know, doesn't have, you know, that type of background typically is not going to have a government background. So the idea is that they're specialized in, you know, the retail wholesale area. And not only can provide the overall management and protect what we have, but then also provide a vision to help, you know, increase revenue. And my own experience with, you know, retail management is that, you know, they're always, they're trained to always beat, you know, the previous year's sales, you know? So the hope and goal is to make sure that that type of mindset is with the market manager, where they're always looking to grow the revenue and expand the experience within the market. So with the deputy director, I think it was already talked about, but the idea is to provide a succession plan within the Parks and Rec Department. And as the city has been growing, that department has been growing astronomically. So we've already expanded out to the corp yard, the house, you know, maintenance staff. You know, other components of it are also going to grow. So the idea is to lessen the burden on the director, who I agree with Councilman, Councilmember Rodriguez, is he's great, but he can't do it all and he does need help. So the idea is to provide some support to some of the other divisions within Parks and Rec with that deputy director. And I know Director Solis, you know, is already has plans for, you know, how he hopes to use the deputy director.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
What is the cost, what is the cost increase because of the shifting around of positions and stuff? And it's not really like a brand new. What is the cost bump that we're seeing from the market manager position? Cause the increase is not the full amount of the position, right? It's actually just? It was on one of the slides and I apologize.
It's $20,062 to the Parks and Rec Fund.
All right, so.
I just wanted to add, the vice mayor kind of took my question to the city manager. But I did want to add that we also need to take into consideration for the, at least specifically the deputy parks director is, we're, we got this Measure Q money, right? And we want Parks and Rec to do more with that money. We also have to take into consideration, you want to do more? You need to have more people to be able to oversee these things, right? And exactly what the city manager and, and Bonnie said was, you know, he's great, but he's going to need some help to help us do the things that we want Parks and Rec to do with all that, all that Measure Q funds. We can't just keep expecting him to do more and more and more and more because one day he's just gonna quit.
And we don't, we don't want that.
I think, I think one of the things that comes to the public is the, you know, and I think, you know, some people that are very cognizant of Measure Q and, and watch it very closely, you know, just want to be sure that the money doesn't all just go to just staff increases. And, and, and I'm very aware of that and we're very cognizant of that. And so, but with increasing Parks and Rec and creating a higher level of service in Parks and Rec, there is going to be an increase and we need bodies. And so that's why, you know, the, the mowing crews and those kinds of things, were one of the first things we enhanced and that's obviously an increase in manpower. But I do think with this deputy position, again, it's really just a shifting of somebody who was doing something else that's been doing a great job in Parks and Rec and shifting that into, into kind of a new role and, and be with the succession plan. And with, and with that, you know, shifting her duties, now we're now, you know, gonna change that into a market director. So it's really just some shoving, shifting around to, to reallocate manpower in a better, in a better way. So I think the 20 grand for the market manager, I'm, I'm excited to see what happens. Like I said, it, you know, maybe we won't see an increase, maybe we will. But yeah, I mean, I just think it's finally, we're in a unique position where we can do that. And I'm just happy to see Parks and Rec Department, you know, for so many years being like the redheaded stepchild, for lack of a better word. You know, having to like rub nickels together and over there, but finally being able to have, you know, and doesn't mean we can just go out willy-nilly and just throw money around. That's not it, but I'm glad to see, and I'm looking forward to that master plan so we can really start, you know, making a, making a plan for the future, so.
I just had one thing is, I don't think people understand that we just have one full-time recreation person in our department to handle all of our sports, T-ball, basketball, all of our special interest programs, our senior programs. We have one full-time person doing that. With bringing that person over, they'd be overseeing the recreation department. Although I think we can, I'm happy with the programs we provide currently, but I think we could do more if we had more people to do things with, so.
I agree.
Well, and the community is constantly saying there's nothing to do and they, there's nothing for the youth to do. And unfortunately, we have to, you have to spend money to provide activities and events and things for, for those youth and the rest of the public to do. And, and it takes bodies. And, and I think this is, again, a sign that GALT is growing up. We're not just growing, we're growing up. We're looking at succession plans. I mean, I just, you know, I've been covering GALT for almost 20 years and it just seems like when anybody left, it was this panic, oh, shoot. We don't have the bodies to fill in anything. And I, I actually am quite proud that GALT's in a position to be able to start thinking forward and, 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 you know, we're growing up and want to provide for our community and we have great staff that wants to provide for our community, but, you know, they're one person or just two people to provide for 25,000 people. We're pretty limited, so I'm very proud. I'm very happy about this.
Any further comments or questions for Ms. Kobe? All right, so I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution. Actually, do we have any public comment? I'm sorry, did I ask for that already?
Yeah.
I did, okay, sorry. To adopt a resolution establishing the market director, deputy parks and recreation director and lead custodian classification approving the proposed job specifications, establishing salary ranges and approve the revised unrepresented mid-management and GALT public service unit salary schedules.
Moved.
Moved by Reed. Seconded by the mayor. Can I have a roll call close, a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Approved 5-0. Moving on to item M, communication. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, city clerks report.
Nothing.
Comments by staff. Mr. Reyes.
Uh, yes, Chief Kalanowski will provide the first comment. Evening, mayor and council. So I'm gonna ask Tina help me out a little bit here. So we have two items. I know I communicated with council via email on our Prepared 911 system we use for emergency calls. We're ready to deploy that to our business line calls. It's basically an AI-supported program that will allow some relief to our dispatchers for the non-emergency calls. So we have two videos. First, we have one of our social media team members and dispatcher, Marquez, that will give us about a minute and a half on this, which is better than my minute and a half. So we'll listen to her and then we'll listen to one of our test calls just so people have an understanding of what it's about.
... news about a new technology coming to our 911 dispatch center. Automated non-emergency triage. Developed by Prepared, a company that partners with nearly 1,000 agencies across 49 states, this system is designed to help us serve you more efficiently, especially during emergencies. Here's how it works. When you call our department's administrative phone line to report a non-emergency issue, you'll be connected with an AI-powered assistant. This assistant will interact with you in real time, quickly assessing your needs and directing you to the right resources. The system supports both English and Spanish and will immediately transfer you to an emergency line if it detects that a true emergency response is needed. Meanwhile, our team will be actively monitoring the administrative line to ensure you're receiving the assistance you need. By using this technology, our 911 call takers can stay focused on handling urgent emergencies, which is especially important during times of high call volume. This means faster response times and shorter wait times when you call 911. This does not affect the 911 emergency line. This new system only applies to our non-emergency administrative line. If you call 911 for an emergency, your call will go directly to a dispatcher, just as it always has. This program is designed to improve service for non-emergency situations while ensuring our emergency line remains fully dedicated to urgent calls. With this new tool and our dispatcher staying engaged, we're enhancing our ability to assist you whether you have a question, need to report a non-emergency, or require immediate help. To learn more, visit our website and check out our non-emergency triage flyer, which provides even more details on how the system works.
And then we have one sample, if we can play that of what you would experience when you call for a non-emergency issue.
Hi, I need to report my cellphone is lost. I believe I last had it while I was doing my grocery shopping at Walmart.
It's not.
Yeah, I was only hearing one side of the conversation.
Did you, everybody just hear the city attorney sigh? Thank you, Mr. Splendario. I feel the same way. I just want you to know now. Can we recycle that and see if it does or?
It is an iPhone.
Can you start back from the beginning? It's like slide it back.
I would close it and reopen it.
No, we're, we're at eight.
Even on the email, you can't.
I just want the mayor to listen to it. It does work. Why is it not working?
Even on the email, you can't hear it.
All right, yeah.
IT professional lookout.
Oh, we do have IT in the city.
Hi, I need to report my cellphone is lost.
Well, while he's fixing it, I heard it. It's actually really cool. It's creepy how real it sounds, to be honest with you.
I believe I last had it while I was doing my grocery shopping at?
Here we go. Rodney, I'm gonna buy you breakfast if it works.
There goes the breakfast.
Yes.
Hi, I need to report my?
Oh, gosh darn it. Yeah, that's what happens when I put in a ticket.
That's what happens.
Okay, so we will bring it back. We will have something on the website with, it demonstrates the call type. It does work on, on our internet because I sent it to the city council. So we will be putting out a functional version of this on social media this week. So the community knows about it. It was our hope. It did work when I sent it over. But nonetheless, this is the program that we will use for our business line calls. We will be, not for the emergency side. The emergency side has what our dispatcher explained, nearly 1,000 agencies nationwide. We will be one of the first agencies in the nation for the business call side. So we are in the front edge and an early adopter to the business call program. El Grove is just now in a 90-day test of this program. It's nice to be ahead of them on something for a change. So I expect them to adopt the same technology and it become commonplace in the region. I'm sorry that I could not get the test call to you the right way, but if there are any questions, happy to answer them. Otherwise, that'll be forthcoming here in the next week. You can make it work?
I might.
Okay, look, Councilmember Reed's gonna save my day.
Only gonna cost you breakfast.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you for calling the non-emergency line. Para español, presione dos.
GALT Police Department, this is AI Assistant Eric. How can I help you?
Hi, I need to report my cellphone is lost.
Okay, I can help you with that. I'll need to collect some information to file a report. Where was the phone? where was the phone last seen?
I believe I last had it while I was doing my grocery shopping at Walmart.
Okay, and what type of phone?
It is an iPhone.
Can you give me a description of the phone for example what color is it and does it have any distinguishing features like a case or any damage?
It is a black phone with a green case and it does have a slight crack in the on the display screen.
Okay, and what is your name and phone number?
My name is Laura. And my phone number is two zero nine three six six seven thousand.
Okay Laura to summarize you lost your black iPhone with a green case and a slight crack on the display screen while grocery shopping at Walmart your phone number is two zero nine three six six seven thousand is that correct?
That is correct.
I have logged the information into the reporting system and someone from law enforcement will contact you as soon as they are available is there anything else I can help you with today?
That is all thank you very much.
Thank you for your call have a nice day.
So Councilmember Reed gets Junior Officer of the Day Award thank you for helping out I appreciate it so there is the call and so we're excited about the program and I think it is what we call a force multiplier for our comm center and it's an inexpensive way to deliver an enhanced product to the community and so we will be launching that like I said next week and you'll see more social media this week on that. Without any other questions that's all I have tonight thank you.
Public Works Director John Griffin.
Good evening Mayor Vice Mayor Councilmembers I have two items for you the first one is just a reminder as a requirement for compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three and the city provides compost to our citizens free of charge we're doing that again this year these costs are covered out of our solid solid waste enterprise funds you know those are available not far from here and if the community is interested in all of the gory details of the who what where when and why there's a good report on our website. Secondly it saddens me to report that Matt Green our Chief Waste Water Plant Operator has submitted his letter of resignation and he'll be leaving the city in early April to take a similar position out of the area so Matt has been an invaluable member of the utilities team for the past six years his passion dedication was evident in our wastewater plant tour last month he is highly respected by all in the Public Works Department especially his team of seven that will be tasked of filling his shoes.
Matt was the main guy that was giving us the tour right?
Correct.
Oh, man. You talked him up too much. I remember I remember in the tour you're like he Matt's so knowledgeable he could like he he people would love to have him anywhere I can see the wheels turning. Oh, man, that's sad news, yeah.
So Council a couple of quick items that I have a couple of updates on recruitments the Community Development Director position will close tomorrow the recruitment we do have a handful of good candidates we do feel that the interviews will probably take place in a week or two and with that we had our final interviews for Finance Director today so we're hoping to make a decision on that in the near future and before I leave I do want to thank the Finance Department for the presentation today the presentation was probably one of the best I've seen in finance regarding each item and it was very thorough and transparent in its review so I really appreciate the effort and the presentation and all the work that went on behind the scenes to make that you know presentation to Council so thank you very much and that's it.
Thank you Chris. Yeah, I I agree with the I'll say my comments for once my turn so Mr. Pratton comment we're moving on to comments by city council members future agenda items Mr. Pratton.
No comments tonight.
No comments alright Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the staff now giving us a good report thank you for the hardworking and also thank you for the public comment thank you for the public members come to the council meeting especially thank you for Chris Brosman and Ken Lee they will bring us a public comment and that's very important and I also like to thank you for the media they sitting back there and that's all tonight thank you.
Mr. Reed.
Basically gonna say whatever the Vice Mayor said thanks to everybody for coming here and staying so late thank you for our our consistent public comment and the individuals that keep showing up to every meeting so we're not here by ourselves and yeah that's it.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Ditto and again thank you staff for all that you've done and I agree with Mr. Reyes that this midterm budget was very easy on on me this time around so and I've seen a lot of these presentations and this was very well done so thank you very much and you handled the questions took the spotlight or the hot seat very well I don't have any future agenda items sort of but because Mr. Griffin will probably run out the door before I could reach him I'm gonna put this out there James Corliss from SECOG the director would like to come down and have me show him around and talk to him about things so if we can maybe get together maybe with Amy as well and there's two proposed dates so I'll let you know about those and and come up with with yeah something. And I did leave something out of my SECOG report I forgot and again don't shoot the messenger but I don't think this was a surprise to anybody but SECOG has been tasked by the state at some level to weigh in on what fees electric vehicles should be charged because since they're not paying gas taxes or the roads are having issues and and they are attributing to the road issues but they're not paying to fix those roads so I don't think it's a surprise when EV vehicles came on board and they weren't paying into that fund a lot of people complained about that and and here we are so my from the talk that was happening it sounds like that's going to be sooner than later that next time if you own an electric vehicle when you go to register your vehicle it there is going to be an additional fee for roads or or something so again don't shoot the messenger but anyway other than that again thank you and that's it.
Alright, thank you Mr. Rodriguez I just want to start out by saying thank you the Finance Team for the presentation was very good Carlos you're always like you you remind me of Matt from the wastewater plant Carlos is like the Matt version of the Finance Department. Yeah. I mean you're just you're just real sharp with like you know you explain things really quick and you don't have to like go it's like you just it's right there it's like yeah it's really cool so and but with that I also want to say thanks like the Vice Mayor said to Mr. Brosman and Mr. Lee Mr. Brosman I appreciate you always in here following you know the budget stuff and and asking questions and and it's funny Mr. Reed said something a little while ago where he said something like you were making a comment you said you know a lot of the public doesn't get the opportunity to come listen to you explain things and I'm like yeah they do they do get the opportunity but nobody does Mr. Brosman does and some other people do but they don't so I'm just gonna say that so I hate to say that but it's true I did want to say that I went to the Bay City Electric open house phenomenal you know kudos to Amy and all the people behind the scenes that worked so hard to get them here phenomenal facility great family ran business it was a great open house I mean it was like I was shocked at how many people were there it was like who everybody who's who was there and except some of you guys weren't there right? You were there you were there?
I was there earlier.
Oh, okay I missed you yeah I came I came a little later yeah yeah I couldn't get away till ten till till twelve but anyways it was great and I'm happy to see you know this is the kind of things we want to see in Galt you know expansion of businesses expansion of job creation industry you know wanting to move to Galt and hopefully the other people will follow behind but it's a great great outfit so and with that leads me to my last request which is actually one more thing before that I want to say thanks to Public Works you guys you know C Street's wrapping up now you know I know there's some people out there that are throwing rocks at it and all that kind of stuff but you know what I I've had a lot of people come to me and say that looks great and even some people who didn't really care for it in the beginning are saying you know it was wrong and actually looks really good and now that the cones and everything are gone and they're able to drive it you know they're realizing it's not as narrow as they first thought or it's not as you know in this net so there's the people are warming up to it I think people will warm up to it some people are not they're gonna hate it and they'll hate it forever but I think it's a great asset to the city I'm very happy there might be a couple there's a couple of spots I'm like cringing to see that we might have to make a couple of small tweaks as people get used to it there's a couple of curbs that that you know maybe could be like a foot shorter or something but we'll we'll see but but overall it looks good hopefully the land so landscaping is it's still in progress or it's almost all done?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Almost all done but still in progress alright good so anyway so thank you guys and you know what and kudos to you guys for getting and you overseeing the construction to be on time construction is never on time it's there's never you you know this you don't ever hit usually there's always overruns with time and we had some big delays in the very beginning with utility companies having to be at their mercy and then we had all the rain stuff and so there was very there was all kinds of opportunities for you guys to come back and say hey because of this or that we're gonna be two weeks later but you know what you know you guys said it was gonna be open on Friday and it was and so I give you guys props for that so thank you appreciate that.
Thank you I do need to give kudos to the contractor George Reed and above and beyond so yes we love taking their credit but I also need to make sure we deflect to the contractor who went above and beyond as well.
Yeah, I do have one question is there supposed to be where the crosswalks are are they still yet to be installed the flashing beacons?
Yes.
I thought so alright alright and then last but not least I wanted to propose a future agenda item actually it's not a big thing it's kind of small but I a few years ago I asked about this so you know at the end of the meetings we always say you know like I just said I attended the Bay City Electric you know as the mayor and I spoke blah blah well the problem is usually at the end of the meetings there's nobody here to hear that stuff and there was a time where we asked if 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 you've done anything or represented the city in capacity at some event or whatever that you can mention that in the beginning at the council comments on boards and commissions and whatever I would like to see if the council would be open to allowing us to do that just when we've done things in official capacity so outside of a board or commissioner committee that we're assigned to we can report on something we did or attended in the community just so that the people can hear it in the beginning of the meeting that may be here and then they all leave and nobody hears it so I would like to agendize that for we're not gonna discuss it right now but I would like to agendize that for discussion to make that change. Would it be okay alright we can talk about what that looks like so alright well with that and I'll can I put it to work order to have the clock changed because I was like it hasn't been a long meeting we've only been here for less than two hours.
Who's the tallest person?
Yeah. So we'll we'll adjourn the meeting at eight forty-nine good night.
She's probably the tallest person.
I got it? Eight thirty still wins.